Chairman and the board members will unmute their microphone. Uh, we will begin uh with the pledge and the prayer. Can you hear Mr. Peppers?
I can.
Okay.
I think everybody's ready now. Let me uh welcome everybody to our uh again another digital platform for our board meeting. But this is our June sixteenth board meeting. Again, welcome all that's in attendance today. Well, thank you for for just being a part of the meeting today. Would Stan, we're gonna have a prayer and then we'll do the pledge of the week and start the meeting. That's right. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your help, Lord, and all that you do for us while we ask you to just continue to guide us. Or give us the wisdom today as we conduct this meeting. And Father, may this pray according to you and everything that's done and said here today. Thank you again for your love, Lord, your mercy, and thank you for all that you do for us in this day and time. Would look over Dr. Barnett's shoulder there, you'll see the flag, kitchen salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance as a flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all. May board members present, or Randy Peppers, Mark Richards, Carol Hyatt, Monty Darwin, Robert Elliott, Superintendent Dr. Jason Barnett. We do have quorum presence, so I'd entertain a motion that uh we call it meeting order. Make the motion. Mark, do I have a second? Sure got that thing, Carol did. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You opposed, same. Meeting has called to order. Uh, first item on our list, uh agenda today, we need to approve the agenda. If you've had a chance to look over that, no questions or anything, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I have a second.
I'll say it. I'll say it.
Monty, any questions on the agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed, same. Record shows unanimous in favor to approve the agenda. Item one B is approval of the May twenty eighth uh minutes from the May twenty eighth meeting, meeting. So uh we uh need a motion to approve these minutes if there's no corrections on the list. I make the move. Robert, do I have a second?
Okay.
Mark, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed, same. Record shows unanimous in favor to approve the May twenty eighth minutes. Uh, second item, we have our accounting, our financial statements, the general fund, uh bank reconciliation, our local student fund balance, and also item B, bills and accounts. Get those bills and accounts paid. I'd entertain a motion to approve these.
I'll make a motion.
Monty, do I have a second?
Second.
Robert, any questions on these? All in favor, say aye.
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 You opposed, same. Record shows unanimous in favor to approve this. Item C, Dr. Barnett, you want to comment on this and uh recommend this?
It's the FY twenty twenty uh budget amendment number two. Uh, it's uh, it's just a minor amendment that we have to do as we go along. We have a lot of money and uh, I don't have the actual document into in front of me the way it is, but it's uh, uh just a pretty standard uh, pretty standard uh amendment.
Okay, item uh two C, the FY twenty twenty budget amendment uh number two, I entertain a motion to approve this.
Make the motion.
Mark, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Carol, any questions or comments on this? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same? Record shows unanimous in favor to approve this. Item three, we have some bids.
Yeah, I have a couple bids here for approval. One is through the CMP program for milk, uh bread, ice cream, and produce. And the other is for cleaning services at the central office facilities building and the virtual school, uh awarding that to Hester's Cleaning Service in Wolfville, one thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars per month.
Further recommendation from Dr. Barnett, uh I'd entertain a motion to approve these bids. I'll make a motion. Robert, do I have a second?
Second.
Monty, any questions or comments on the bids? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same? Record shows unanimous unanimous in favor to approve these bids. Number four, we have open job injuries.
Couple of open job injuries, uh Stanley Bullock, uh custodian Valleyhead High School, that's three days. And Adam Haynes, maintenance worker at the facilities, and that is four days.
Per the recommendation, I'd entertain a motion to approve this.
Make the motion.
Mark, do I have a second?
Second.
Robert, any questions or comments? We'll do a roll call vote on on the remainder of these. Mark Richards?
Yes.
Carol Hyatt?
Yes.
Monty Darwin?
Yes.
Robert Elliott?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, it's unanimous in favor to approve this. All right, item five.
Have three retire uh retirement resignations for you to consider today. Uh, recommend the following, uh Ms. Michaela Willingham, secondary math teacher at Plainfield High School, as retirement effective, uh six one twenty. John Allen Pope, math instruction coach for the system, that's a resignation effective June twelfth, two thousand twenty. And Teddy Whitmire, secondary science teacher at Five High School, uh resignation effective June fifteenth, two thousand twenty.
Heard these uh retirement resignations uh presented to us, I'd entertain a motion to approve these.
I'll make the motion.
Carol, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Robert, any questions or comments? Again, we'll do a roll call vote on this. Mark?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Monty?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, it's unanimous in favor to approve this.
Okay, item six, have a leave of absence. Uh, to present, I recommend we approve the following leave of absence for Ms. Ashley Williamson, English language arts teacher at Selena High School. Uh, that is from eight three, two thousand twenty through uh five twenty seven, two thousand twenty one, so that's from the twenty twenty one school year.
Per this recommendation on a leave of absence, I'd entertain a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Mark, any questions or comments? All in favor, we'll do a roll call vote again. Mark?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Monty?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, it's unanimous in favor to approve this. Item seven, some transfers?
Recommend the following transfers, uh they will all be effective August one unless otherwise specified. Uh, Gregoria Sarabia, twelve month custodian to Assistant Secretary, uh Collinsville High School. Uh, that will be effective uh July one, uh two thousand twenty. Uh, Danica Phillips, uh elementary uh teacher at Iver High School to elementary teacher at Five High School. Marshall Dobbins, elementary teacher at Valleyhead High School to elementary teacher at Five High School. Uh, Dawn Osborne, Assistant Special Ed Director to Special Ed Education Director, that will be effective July one, two thousand twenty. Uh, Megan Lee, Library Media Specialist slash itinerary Instructional Coach at Ruhamla Junior High School, to itinerary Library Media Specialist at Moon Lake Schools and Ruhamla Junior High School. Uh, Daniel Pope, Busman Kent to Shop Foreman at the Bus Garage, effective July one. Kim Osborne, uh Assistant Principal at Crossville Middle School to Assistant Principal at Collinsville High School. Twenty, uh Dr. Anna Harrison, Assistant Principal, ten month at Collinsville High School, to Instructional Supervisor, twelve month Central Office, that will be effective July one. And Missy Gilbert, a bus driver at Iver High School to itinerary Special Education, Bus Aid at Iver Special Service Center.
Hey, you heard the recommendations from Dr. Barnett on the transfers, uh items A through I, I'd entertain a motion to approve these.
Make a motion.
Mark, do I have a second?
Okay.
Carol, any questions or comments on these?
Just like I say, I'm proud of Dr. Harrison getting this promotion. She's a hard worker and she's overcome a lot over the years and I wish her good luck. I agree with that, Mark, I believe you're right on. She's a, she's been a good one and she's a fighter. And I've got one other thing to say, I hate seeing Ms. Phillips go to Five. She's an excellent teacher and I was losing a very good person and a teacher to her going to Five. So Five has gained very much and I hate to let her go, but I know I'm happy for her and her family, that's what she is.
Any other comments? All right, all in favor, we'll do a roll call vote on this. Mark?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Monty?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, it's unanimous in favor to approve these transfers. Next item, we have item made placements.
Recommend the following placements, once again, all these have an effective date of August one unless otherwise specified. Uh, I recommend the following, Jamie Pruitt, secondary math teacher at Iver High School. Lisa Thayer, elementary teacher at Collinsville High School. Amanda Snick, elementary teacher at Collinsville High School. Nicole Carroll, business education teacher at Valleyhead High School. Renee Freddy, elementary teacher at Valleyhead High School. Molly Bill, elementary teacher at Crossville Middle School. Akila Barclay, itinerary English language arts teacher, Henry Junior High School, Ruhamla Junior High School.
Further recommendation on these certified placements, uh items A through G, I'd entertain a motion to approve these.
I'll make the motion.
Robert, do I have a second?
Second.
Lieutenant Monty, any questions or comments on these? All in favor, we'll do a roll call vote. Mark?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Monty?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, it's unanimous in favor to approve these positions. Uh, next item, we have support. If you don't mind, Dr. Barnett, can you do each of the H through N separate?
I'd be glad to. Uh, recommend the following, uh Kristen Hayman, itinerary school nurse, uh Henry Junior High School.
All right, you heard the recommendation from Dr. Barnett, I'd entertain a motion to approve these.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mark? All right, any questions or comments on item H? All in favor, we'll do a roll call vote on this. Mark?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Monty?
Yes.
Robert?
No.
I vote yes as well, and unanimous, all right, it's a four one vote to approve this.
I recommend is April Schrader, uh CMP Supervisor, Central Office, effective July twentieth, two thousand twenty.
Per this recommendation, I'd entertain a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion.
Robert, do I have a second on that one?
I'll say it.
Carol, any questions on this? All in favor, we'll do a roll call vote. Mark?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Monty?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, it's unanimous in favor to approve this.
Okay, my next recommendation is Michael Peppers, bus driver at Crossville School.
Per this recommendation, I'd entertain a motion to approve this.
Make a motion.
Mark, do I have a second?
Second.
Robert? Any questions? All in favor, Mark?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Monty?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
I will extend my vote, uh does pass with four yes votes on this.
Okay, um my next recommendation is Mr. Eddie King, bus driver at Selena High School.
Further recommendation, uh I'd entertain a motion to approve this.
Make a motion.
Monty, do I have a second?
Second.
Who's that, the second? Robert? Any questions? All in favor, Mark?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Monty?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, it's unanimous in favor to approve this. Next item?
I recommend is Desiree Henderson, prehead auxiliary, Ruhamla Junior High School.
Per this recommendation, I'd entertain a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion.
Carol, I have a second.
Second.
Monty? Any questions? All in favor?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Monty?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, it's unanimous in favor to approve this.
Uh, next item of recommendation is Mr. Christopher Hastings, computer hardware software technician, uh for the district.
Per this recommendation, I'd entertain a motion to approve this.
Make a motion.
Mark, do I have a second?
Second.
Monty, any questions?
This replacing, who's this replacing?
Well, we we've had several, we've been trying to replace uh several of them for a while.
A while, yeah.
There've been uh times we've 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 put it out there and haven't had the folks uh that really qualified in in cases. And so this right here, uh it just gets us back close to where we're supposed to be. I I uh, there's there's several that have left over the years and it's I can't remember exactly which person this was.
Yeah, well, I thought, I knew we had several missing.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor, Mark?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Monty?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, it's unanimous in favor to approve this.
My next recommendation is Mr. uh Robert Bobby Hullett, bus driver at Crossville Schools.
Per this recommendation, I'd entertain a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion.
Carol, I have a second.
Second.
Robert, any questions? All in favor, Mark?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Monty?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, it's unanimous in favor to approve this. Item nine, we have uh summer workers and you can do all those together if you like.
Yeah, I recommend the following summer workers for our for our, just a brief notice. Some of our summer schools, uh obviously with our extended uh closure in terms of school students uh attending school on campus, some schools were able to kind of get a jump on it, some of our uh custodians got ahead of the game. And so some schools did not necessarily want a summer worker this year. And so we gave them the uh the uh option of either taking the summer worker or if they did not need a summer worker, they could take the the contracted amount and we would just give them a a uh monetary amount. That way they can make some upgrades on their campuses or or just do, you know, that way we made the same equitable amount of money whether they use it for a contracted uh uh worker or whether they use it just for other upgrades or other other things that they need functioning growing on their campus. So you may not see every school, but but it was definitely dispersed. Uh, so I recommend the following summer workers, Grant Ashley, Selena High School, Hunter Hill, Selena High School, Brody Coats, Five High School, Kobe Harris, Five High School, Caleb Max Fady, Geraldine High School, Brett Holden, Moon Lake Elementary School, Cory Blair, Plainview High School, Giovanni Chaparo, Plainview High School, Matthew Ogil, Valleyhead High School, Seth White, Valley, the Kappa County Technology Center, and Kelly Mays, Facilities.
Heard uh the recommendation on these summer workers, uh I'd entertain a motion to approve these.
Make a motion.
Mark, do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on these? All right, all in favor, Mark?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Monty?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, it's unanimous in favor to approve these. Item, we have contracts there.
Have three contracts to consideration. I recommend the following, the learning trait for applied behavioral analysis, uh from IDB. Uh, Ber Berice Luna, translator for uh school enrollment, local. Uh, that's a contract that we have, it's based towards translator for our local for school enrollment process, which is local.
Heard the recommendation on these contracts, had a chance to review them, I'd entertain a motion to approve these contracts.
I'll make a motion.
Robert, do I have a second?
Second.
Carol, you have a motion and a second on the floor, and any questions or comments on the contracts? None? Take a roll call vote, Mark?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Monty?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, it's unanimous in favor to approve these.
Okay. I have a few uh recommendations, comments, and reports here. Uh, the first one is, uh we uh I have a recommendation for Ms. Jennifer Williams uh to receive the uh duties and the compensation of the Assistant Superintendent Supplement. That of course will be in addition to her regular duties as federal programs director.
Per this recommendation, I'd entertain a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion.
Mark, do I have a second on this?
Second.
Robert, got a motion and a second on the floor, uh any questions or comments?
Uh, I believe this is what Ms. Gann had, I just want to say I wish Ms. Gann the best. She's been with us for a long time, deep responsibility, special education, she did a great job. Good luck to her.
Agreed. Congratulations, Ms. Williams, I know she's a hard worker, she's done a lot for this uh this school district. She'll do a great job for you.
Yes, she will.
Any other questions or comments? All right, take a roll call vote, Mark?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Monty?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, it's unanimous in favor to approve this.
Okay, a couple items for comment, maybe need vote, is the translator salary schedule correction. Uh, there there is simply a uh, that we have a translator and a transliterate in their own different pay schedules, and sometimes that has created confusion uh at some point in time. So really what we have here is just simply making a notation, uh just specifying correctly uh that that's what it is, it's not changing the pay schedule, it's not, there there's no salary changes or adjustments. It's just simply clarifying, uh as we've had more translators and translitators that come in and that, it just, we found a need to approve that. Uh, so you have the correct attached salary schedule. So I just recommend we we add that addition, just to to put that word translator there on that salary schedule so that it is uh crystal clear as to which is which.
Per this recommendation, if you got a chance to look over that, I'd entertain a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say it.
But Carol first and then uh Monty on the second. Got a motion second on the floor, uh no questions on this? All right, take a roll call vote. Uh, Mark?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Monty?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Vote yes as well, it's unanimous in favor to approve this.
All right, the next item is uh adult CMP meal increase to three dollars and seventy-five cents. That's a uh, there's a formula that we have to use each year and we have to adjust our student prices and our uh adult prices as as determined necessary based on prices of uh, you know, our commodities and all that sort of thing. There's a formula that we have to use. The student prices, we we chose not to increase this year, just to keep them as affordable as we possibly can for our students. But we came out of, a little bit out of compliance if we did not increase our our uh our employees' uh uh meal meal price. So I recommend we increase that uh adult CMP meal price meal price to three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Per this recommendation, I'd entertain a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion.
Monty, do I have a second? Carol, any questions or comments on this?
How much is this?
It's about a quarter.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor, Mark?
I think Mark may have lost his connection.
I'll vote for it, you want to vote?
We'll give him just a second, see if he gets up and going or... Dr. Barnett might want to give him a call and see what happened.
Let me give him a call, I'm gonna mute myself, I'm gonna give him a call.
Apologize for those watching, but let's see if we can get this fixed here.
They have had a power surge in his place of employment, so once the power comes back up, he will he will uh rejoin us, but he doesn't have a timeframe from that. So considering we have four members who can vote, um and that we have a court of voting, we can still pass things. I I say we proceed until he gets back.
Go ahead and do that, uh that is, and we've only got a few more items here, we'll finish these items up and uh so...
FaceTime, you know, I could FaceTime on my phone if you want me to and hold him up.
Doesn't make a difference, maybe what what other board members want to do, you know, get his vote on it?
Whatever. Let's just...
If you can get it, we'll just proceed with this and then uh, they'll catch up with us here real quickly. All right, Carol, on on this item, we have the uh adult CMP meal increase of three point uh, three dollars and seventy-five cents. So uh, we've got a motion second already on the floor. Carol?
Yes.
Monty?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, it's four votes yes. All right, next item?
Okay, we have a uh supplement from the Bear Club, uh to Robbie Coker. Uh, this is coming from the Bear Club and not a a district uh supplemental amount, in an amount of two thousand.
Further recommendation from Dr. Barnett, I'd entertain a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Richards is now joining us, I will remake that motion so that he can hear it.
Let's do that.
Mr. Richards, can you hear me? You'll have to unmute yourself, Mr. Richards. Uh, recommend the uh, the, I don't know if we want to go ahead and get his uh vote on the CMP price increase before we move on or if we want...
Let's do that, we haven't moved on to another one yet, let's back up. Uh, we've got four yes votes on the adult CMP bill increases of the three seventy-five. All other ones that vote a yes, we'll take your vote on that as well.
Yes.
It passes unanimous. Uh, next item?
Next is a supplement, uh corporation from the Bear Club, this is not a, uh not through the Board of Education, to the to Robbie Coker, in an amount of twenty thousand.
Per this recommendation, I'd entertain a motion to approve this.
I'll make the motion.
Carol, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Monty, any questions or comments on this? All right, all in favor, Mark?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Monty?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, it's unanimous in favor to approve this.
Uh, uh, next recommendation is a supplement from the Five Athletic Club, uh to Paul Benefield, in an amount of two thousand.
Per this recommendation, I'd entertain a motion to approve this.
Make a motion.
Mark, second. Robert's got the second on that, any questions or comments? All in favor, Mark?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Monty?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, it's unanimous in favor to approve this. Next item? I vote yes as well. It's unanimous in favor to approve this. Next item?
The next item is, uh, why don't you gentlemen and ladies, uh, approve the, uh, the, uh, entire policy? There were one policy that became in conflict and so I recommend we remove the Internet opt-out policy as we move to a one-to-one initiative and, and, uh, uh, situation in our system is important that we, we, we have that correct. So I recommend we remove that Internet opt-out policy.
Had a chance to review that. I'd entertain a motion to, uh, approve this.
Make a motion.
Robert, do I have a second?
Okay.
Carol? Any questions or comments on this? All in favor, Mark?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. It's unanimous in favor to approve this. Next item?
Okay, just to, uh, give you a couple, a little bit of eye update on where we are with our COVID nineteen situation. Uh, we are planning, uh, toward proceeding opening next year. As of right now, I, we doing the, uh, August seventh, as the school calendar, um, dictates and was approved. We have sent out our early enrollment applications, uh, for, we have Virtual Academy. Uh, once again, that is a, uh, certainly an optional program that parents are considering. It is a rigorous program that's parents, uh, students who may be concerned or have anxieties about sending their kids back to school in the fall can certainly apply to that and give mother additional information and, uh, learn a little bit more about it. And there will be, I'm sure that there'll be many that will, uh, take advantage of that opportunity. So we may have to make some adjustments as we go along for that. But a couple of weeks ago, I met with, uh, a committee and I, uh, a, a large committee or a larger committee. We had several subcommittees to consider things about how we're gonna reopen school next year. In the coming days, next couple of days, I'm gonna be meeting with, uh, those committees and we're gonna consider things like, uh, nursing protocols, how we're gonna handle nursing, uh, students that get sick, uh, inventory. If we're sending Chromebooks and stuff like that at home, how are we gonna make sure our inventory is proper? Uh, our one-to-one, as we talked about, one-to-one procedure, one-to-one, uh, procurement, how we're gonna procure all the resources that we need. Transportation is another area, CMP, uh, just general instruction, what are we gonna do when we're in school? If we have to take a break for a brief time, how are we gonna handle that? Uh, extracurricular, uh, professional development, general school procedures, special education, how we're gonna use personnel, uh, career tech, facilities, uh, and, and just a, that's just a list of, of things that come up quickly as we, as we discuss it. Uh, we wanna have a real developed, a real thoughtful plan and we're working, uh, with a lot of people here, a lot of voices to, to make sure that we're on the right, uh, steps and the right process to get school going back next year. Uh, one of them obviously is facilities and it's proper sanitation and cleaning and making sure everything is, is safe. So, uh, there's a lot of people that are working hard on that and, uh, I hope to meet, I will be meeting with the, the, the leaders of those subgroups that we talked about in the next couple of days. And we'll be working to continue to develop a plan to present to, to you all and the public for how we're gonna handle things next year as we open school. And we're gonna do it in a safe, efficient, uh, way possible, but we're also gonna have school and I believe school is something that we need, the kids need, we all need, and it's very important. But we're gonna do it in a safe manner, efficient manners we possibly can, uh, and, but be flexible, know, not knowing what, you know, is possibly ahead. So, uh, I just wanna update you on that. And I also, uh, as we continue in the summer, uh, um, I, every, since with the last few meetings, I've requested permission to place pending board approval. We wanna do that once again, cause as we get closer and closer, the timeline gets more narrow and, and we have it open and we need to fill it. And sometimes that creates another issue. We gotta keep going. Uh, so I do, uh, request permission to place pending board approval.
Per the recommendation from Dr. Barnett, uh, get the place pending board approval. I'd entertain a motion to approve this.
Make a motion.
Mark, do I have a second?
Okay.
Carol? Give it to Carol. Any questions or comments? All right, all in favor, Mark?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Vote yes as well. It's unanimous in favor to approve to give him that permission. All right, anything else from Dr. Barnett?
That's all I have. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
All right, uh, board members, let me, uh, mention one thing, uh, real quickly. If you, back earlier in the, the meeting, we approved a couple of transfers, uh, from Collinsville. Added a, uh, assistant principal and then, of course, with Miss Harrison transferring out, opens up another position down there in the assistant principals', uh, position down there. Now, in the past, uh, we have provided them with an extra half of the unit, uh, under the assistant principals' position. Last few years, uh, to be paid out of local funds. Now, this is something, uh, ask Dr. Barnett to take a look at maybe, uh, I believe right now might be a good time for us to reconsider this position when it's being posted, uh, and see if we can get back to what the state, the state foundation, foundation units that are earned. And I believe it's one and a half on their assistant principals. Maybe it's time that we get back to that and, uh, see if that's something we can take a look at. Currently, they earned them one and a half and we've been paying for another half for their school, giving them two total assistant principals. So, just asking you to consider that if you would, Dr. Barnett, uh, when this, uh, position's being posted.
Sure.
All right, other board members? Mark?
I'll say.
Carol?
Uh, I'd just like to ask Dr. Barnett if he would, as we get prepared to start back to school. Uh, since we missed, um, you know, nine weeks, I believe, of students last, uh, this last year. Uh, I, and, and lots of folks have been out of, uh, out of work, uh, that we would take a look at the teacher supply list if you would encourage the principals. Um, I know sometimes that's just a standard thing in a grade, in a particular grade and no matter who, one teacher wants all of it or not, they all ask for the same thing. But they should have some leftover supplies this year and not have to ask for parents for so much. Uh, and some, I think, I think probably some have some stuff on their list that is not, um, that could be voided altogether. Uh, but if you just ask the principals to take a look at those lists and, uh, try to minimize those and not have to ask the parents for so much supplies.
We certainly want to be mindful in, uh, of our resources and, and asking our parents to provide things. And we've actually spoken with our principals back even before this, uh, COVID nineteen break, uh, to consider looking at that and using some of our other monies that we can use. Uh, not necessarily use other funds to help support purchase student, uh, student aid as, as possible. And so we will certainly be mindful as we, we move forward.
Thank you.
Bonnie?
I just want to say, like, there's everybody that's out there watching this and I know this is not early, but it once was, uh, but it's a working horse for now.
Robert?
I guess one thing I'd like to say, uh, I hope that in the future when we have transfers within the system that we look a little more at trying to get these people in place. Uh, we, and me, I try to always approve transfers if I can. If it's open, give up people opportunity to move and, and so, uh, I, I wish we just look a little better and try to always, if we can, encourage our principals and all to make these people. If they've been in our system for a while and they've proven to do the job when they are, they should be well enough to go to another place and do the same job. I just wish we would consider that very much when we make those transfers.
As for board members? All right, the date of our next meeting is July the ninth, twenty twenty. Our regular meeting time will be at twelve PM. Uh, meeting will be again conducted through a digital platform. So, no other comments or questions from the board members? Uh, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Mark, do I have a second?
Back it.
Robert? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a great day.
Thank you.